Alrighty, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Good evening ladies and gentlemen and welcome to the Joint Committee of the City Council and School Committee for the City of Holyoke. I am the co-chair from the City Council side Nelson Roman and I will introduce my co-counselors and then hand it over to my co-chair, the amazing John Brunel. Thanks John for all the emails back and forth we've been having. So we'll do a roll call from the City Council side. Vice Chair Mike Sullivan. City Council Ward 1 Gladys Abram Martinez.
Yeah.
And I am the Chair from the City Council side Nelson Roman. And allow Mr. Brunel to do the School Committee.
Sure. Irene Feliciano Sims and John Brunel here. Hey, I've never been called amazing but thanks. I have to let my wife know that.
And for all the viewing audience at home, we do have some counselors in the chambers. We have City Council Ward 1 Howard Graney Jr., City Council President Kevin Jordan. We have City Council, so weird, Mr. Chairman Bartley, I serve on DG Narwhal, Dave Bartley, and City Council Ward 3, actually Dave Bartley, and City Council Ward 5 Linda Vacon. Thank you so much for being here today. We do have one individual signed up for the public comment section, so allow...
Have we already signed?
Oh, just signed, okay, no, no. And we have Ward 1 School Committee Woman Mildra LeFave who's just entered the chambers as well. What, since we have no one signed up for public speaking this evening, a motion would be in order to take up item numbers 1 and 2 as a package please?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
One second.
Alright. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. With that being said, we'd like to welcome to the chamber Receiver of the Holyoke Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Shreik. Thank you so much Dr. Shreik first and foremost for being here. We will be using the Bartley Method this evening in the chambers. Works so well, that is patented per Chairman Bartley and other committees, so the hope is and the intent is that we will all be able to ask you questions. You can answer, we're gonna do that for about an hour and also allow any counselors in the chambers and school committee members to just ask questions and check in. And I as the chairman will just facilitate and actually not speak as much tonight, which is actually a refreshing thing for the chairman. So with that, I will open the floor to any... Well, I'll allow you actually to do Bartley Method, sorry Counselor Bartley for messing that up. I'll allow you to make an opening statement for about five minutes, say whatever you'd like, and then we'll ask and open up to questions.
Just before he starts, if I could, just, we want to thank the Dr. Shreik for coming down tonight. He's been very active in the city going out, reaching out, to having different community events since he's been here since July. And he's really done a great job of getting out to the community. I don't know how many number of events you've had, but probably 12 or 15 or so different events. He's also been working with each one of the ward counselors to have a monthly meeting in their ward, rotating, started with Ward 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is next, the next month, and then six, seven, and start again in the beginning of the school year. Just want to commend him for doing that. Something he doesn't have to do as the receiver, but it's something he thought was very important to do. And I think that's paying dividends to our schools and also appreciate his interaction. So just wanted people to know how available he actually has been and it's been great, great change in that aspect. So just let him go ahead first, but I just want to mention that as well.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to introduce Erin Linville's next to me. Erin is our Director of Turnaround and Strategy. Her position is funded through the turnaround funds that we have as a district in receivership. And she started with us full-time in January and is really, you know, the sort of, helps set the direction and the strategy for the, for the school district around the many initiatives that are part of the turnaround document, that 105-page document. So I know that there will be questions tonight, some I'll be able to answer, some I won't. I wanted Erin to be able to capture some of those questions so we can get you answers to those that we can't answer tonight because while I've learned a lot in my short time here, I don't have every answer at my disposal. I will just say this, I really do appreciate the ability to engage the community. I think, I've said from the beginning that I think the, working with elected officials is an important part of my responsibility as a receiver of schools and to be accountable to the public here. And so we've tried very hard to get out there and meet with families. And I certainly hope that to continue. I think we still have a lot of work to do to improve, to, I mean, we still, we had a meeting on secondary redesign the other night. We didn't have a great turnout of families, not representative of the whole district. We're gonna run, we're gonna do it again in, at Morgan School in a couple of weeks. Now that we have a Director of Family and Community Engagement who just began with us, you know, we're gonna, I think you're gonna see the efforts to really get the message out and to do what I've been saying we wanted to do, which is to not expect people to come to us, but for us to go to our families is a, is a big part of the work that Iliana Sintron who just started with us will lead for the district. If I could just take a minute to say a few other things. I also though want to make sure that this dialogue between City Council, School Committee, myself, there are a lot of ways I think we can leverage each other in terms of supporting our constituents. And I think I definitely need the support of the City Council to, as we look at the work that needs to be done in schools, it's not just the support of the School Committee and the work that we do as a school district, but it's gotta be a whole community effort. And I hope that the relationship and the dialogue continues as positively as I've seen thus far. And I would just, you know, ask that as we, this, I think there's a, you know, certainly an important purpose for these, for this dialogue. There's a number of things that I would like to, you know, I've had conversations with the Council President. I'd like to continue some of that dialogue because your support is gonna be essential to getting the district and the schools to where we all would like them to be. And so, you know, as we move forward, I'd like to bring up some things that I think we could, we could use yours, I could use your support on as I think about the work we're doing. So six months into the receivership, I think there's been, I think there's been a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes. I think there's, we've had a tremendous amount of eyes looking at the district. We've conducted a, you know, a look at our central office, we've conducted a look at, you know, our high school programming thus far, we're looking at our special education programming, that's been complete. We've, we've got eyes now on our ELL program for the district. And now it's time to start putting some of those recommendations into, you know, to begin implementing those. I think some of them are very exciting. They do require resources and they do require rethinking how we do business as a school district, but there have been, I'm excited about the recommendations that came around secondary. I think we are, we spent, Erin and I spent the day today looking at the budget. And what, our goal right now as a school district is to shrink the central office in a way that gets, that makes us more effective, but also gets resources back into the schools, right? So I can tell you already that we see this as a phased project where this first round, we can do a tremendous amount of reconfiguring that will get resources to the school level. But there's also a phase two because we have, we're pretty antiquated in the systems and the technology that we run as a school district. So things that are being done by humans right now don't need to be down the road. And so I think that might take two or three years to, to get to that place, but you'll see already this fall that there'll be a substantial amount of funds diverted back to the schools. While we know things are tight, we're not, we are working within the confines of what we have. I'm always open to more funding, City Council, but I also know we're working within the constraints that we have, but using what we have currently and rethinking its, its purpose. The idea is we want to give our school leaders, our principals, and our teacher leaders more flexibility to use funds in a way that they think is right for their schools. In terms of setting up the enrichment, enrichment opportunities with, we're moving to a longer day or a fuller day in the elementary schools, we want them to have more autonomy over how they use their funds. To do that, we've got to give them some more discretionary dollars to do that. I don't believe that I'm the best person positioned to make decisions at each individual school. And, and, you know, if we have the right leaders in place, and in some cases we do, in some cases we don't, we want the teams, strong teams of people making those decisions. So the work we're doing right now is determining how we get as much of that, those resources to the people closest to students. I am very concerned with how many bodies we have not actually in front of children, both at 57 Suffolk and then also with, even in the schools, there are a lot of people who have roles that actually don't interact with children. More than any other district I've ever been, I've seen or been around, there's a lot, there's office staff, there's roles that are outside of classrooms. We want to make sure that we have the right class sizes, we have the right set of support staff that are working with students. And, and, and we're gonna push our schools to, to, you know, to rationalize the decisions they make. You know, if you need an additional assistant principal or you need an additional staff member in the office, well, that's, those are not necessarily directly impacting children. So you have to, you have to be able to explain why that's, why that's the case. Just a couple of the highlights I would say, and then we'll turn to some of your questions is, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing, I mean, I'm excited about the work we're doing at the high schools with dual enrollment. We're expanding dual enrollment opportunities. I met with HCC yesterday. We, they've, we've committed to actually more than five times, increasing the number of students that can dual enroll by five. Right now, we have more than we've ever had this semester going, this current semester. There are 22 students at Holyoke High that are dual enrolled. We're looking to get the number up to 120, 130 slots for next year, which is the most that Holyoke has ever had before in dual enrollment, both at Dean and at Holyoke High. This idea of a ninth grade academy is one that had been, had been supported in the past, but we're, the idea of implementing that as a, you know, as a, I think, an important structure, looking at the eighth to ninth grade transition. And then I, the other area is around creating pathways at Dean that would truly be linked to the workforce, that would be rigorous, meaningful. I think we've got to have some standards of getting students into Dean. It's not about anybody who applies gets in, but you've got to show a certain level of interest and commitment and we've got to create an environment there that is a high-level envi, you know, an environment that, with rigorous expectations for kids. And so we're gonna start working with HCC at looking at manufacturing and healthcare, the two areas that they've first responded to. And, and, and that would start in 10th grade, according to the recommendations that the redesign committee gave us. Early childhood is an area we've invested a lot in, we continue to want to expand the number of seats that are open to students. Right now, we're filled, but we don't have enough classrooms to meet the demand of all families in Holyoke. We'd like to be able to provide free early childhood preschool to every family who wants it in Holyoke. We're not quite there, but we continue to work on that expansion. We have a new kindergarten curriculum that we're implementing next year that's much more exploratory, more investi, it's, it's the kind of curriculum that people have wanted to see, which involves purposeful play, more dynamic engagement of students. That's, that's an area that people will see next year. The middle school experience is something that I've talked a lot about, is how do we create more dynamic middle school experiences for kids that involve technology, robotics, coding, more arts, music? I think people will start to see some of that next year and the plans that student, the schools have for the fuller day, but we're still, we still have work to do to get to where we want to for a middle school experience. So I'm gonna stop, stop there. I shared some of what, some of the things that are coming, some of the highlights and things that are coming in the coming months, but we'll open it up to questions.
Yes, and I thank you so much Dr. Shreik for those opening statements. Before I open it up to the committee members, I would like to again echo the sentiments of the co-chair from the School Committee side for you being so open and willing. And we hope that this relationship is the starting point to many meetings. I know I've committed and I'm working with my City Council colleagues to make this committee from the City Council side a permanent standing committee, so that way we continue this relationship for years. And we hope this is one of many more. We know that hopefully tonight's conversation will stir up more and we hope to have you back, if not next month in April, you're welcome anytime. With that being said, I would open the floor to any of our colleagues on the committee who would like to ask any questions to start. Counselor Sullivan, and then...
Steve, around Dean Tech, could you get into some more specifics as to your vision for the future of Dean Tech? And then in particular, each, a couple of the different school, you know, shops there also?
Yep. So I've just, we just heard the recommendations that came for secondary redesign, so I have, I'm still getting feedback on what those recommendations are. I think where the committee feels strongly is that we make Dean a much more desirable place for people to go to school. We've got to change the image and the brand of Dean Tech. And it's got, I mean, if you look around the state, vocational schools are in high, high demand. In fact, in Chicopee, Chicopee Comp is a more desirable school than the traditional high school there. And you see, you know, Westfield Tech is an example, people want to get into vocational career technical programs. There's no reason why Dean couldn't be that. We've got to change the standards. I think linking with a community college to create a better articulation to college and to the workforce will do, will do that. And we've got to invest in the right shops, the right, the right program, I don't want to say shops, but the right programs. So it may be that some of what is there needs to go because it's not what we need and we need to add some new programs. So that's, that, that won't happen overnight, but in assessing, we have some that are excellent in quality and are preparing students well, and we have some that are not of high quality. And we need to reassess what that, you know, what, what our offerings are. But we've got to change the, the, it's got to be a place of, it's, we've got to change the brand so that it becomes a desirable location for people to go to school.
I understand that, and I'm glad to hear that, from what I'm gathering, the plan is to continue the program at Dean Tech, to continue along that path. The, in particular, both the graphic arts department, can you expound on any plans there for development? And if we have, you know, through that, also the diesel shops, which we've learned are state-of-the-art with high demand for high-paying jobs.
Yep. So I don't know much about the graphic arts department there, I mean, that's something I can, you know, I don't know, I don't have intimate knowledge of every shop. I do know that one thing, one program that is a signature program at Dean is the diesel shop. And it's something that's desirable to even students from outside of Holyoke. And so if we can continue to beef up shops like the manufacturing programs, the diesel program, there is a demand for healthcare, so that's why healthcare is a focus. There is a demand for early educators too, so that's an area we want to think about. We want to make sure we're responding to the needs of the workforce. And I, diesel is one of the signature programs that I think we'd want to continue to grow there because of, like you said, the demand once students leave.
The, I know you had some issues back in, I think it was October or November, we had tried to put together a trip with some people from Connecticut. Have you guys had any chance to reach back out to them? Or, I know the schedule's really...
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the, with the folks you're referring to.
This would be the Windsor Marketing Group?
Oh, okay.
And Goodwin College.
I'm not sure, I can check with Ms. Davalos to see if she's had any connection with them, if you mind writing that down.
Okay. Just to make the rest of you aware, what, Goodwin College would like to develop a pipeline with Dean Tech, between the college, between Goodwin College itself and Dean Tech. They have millions of dollars in untapped scholarship money for low-income students. And as well as that, the Windsor Marketing Group would like to direct, a direct pipeline with the graphic arts department.
Okay.
They're really struggling to fill positions and find qualified people in the graphic arts industry as well.
Great. No, that's, I'm glad you mentioned that again. We'll make sure we follow up.
Counselor Jordan?
Just one quick follow-up on the Dean point. Who's running Dean? Do you, are you running, is your staff running Dean?
Yeah, the school department.
No more private vendor?
There's no private vendor.
Okay. That was it I had on Dean. In terms of, if you could just talk about a little bit more of home office over here at 57 Suffolk Street. In terms of the building itself, are we having, continuing to have conversations about where we're going? In terms of its future and perhaps other arrangements? As you know, this is definitely a priority of mine. I made a presentation in front of Taxpayers Association today and that certainly was on the to-do list budget-wise for us to address why we continue to, for now 20 years, rent the headquarters of the Holyoke School Department, paying 340,000 a year for ostensibly a building that's worth about, you know, one point, you know, $1 million or so. It's, I mean, it's like renting Holyoke High School.
Right.
Renting your house. Who does that? It's, it's complete fiscal insanity. So we need to get that under control, maybe you want to touch on that? I also wanted to see, you've had some leadership changes, you want to just touch on that? I understand that perhaps in finance, HR, and recently the Assistant Superintendent, you want to just kind of maybe give us what you can on, to the extent you can about the leadership that's underneath you?
So in regards to the central office, yeah, I asked the same question, you know, I'm all, I'm game to do that. But we've been working with the mayor's office on that. I know there's plans at looking at purchasing the building. We are, we are ready and prepared to do what we need to be supportive of that. You know, we've also looked at other options ourselves. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't need a, I don't need much of an office space. I mean, if we could go into a school, we would do that too. It's just the cost of retrofitting might be too exorbitant, but if it's, certainly we, we would support the purchase of the building. We probably don't need as much space as we have now in the future if we're actually gonna reduce the footprint of the central office. So, so very supportive of that. I also have a lot of questions about central supply as an aside. You know, I'm not sure that as a district our size, we should have a building like that.
Down on Main Street you're referring to?
Down on Main Street. I mean, I, I don't know that we're prepared to make, you know, I have to be careful, I don't pull out too many strings at one time, but I do think, I have a lot of questions about that facility because most districts don't have central supply facility. And that, there's a cost to us that isn't going to schools, so. But that, you know, I went beyond the question, but I, that's another building I...
Something you're reviewing.
We're definitely reviewing that. In terms of the leadership changes, there have been a number of staffing changes in the district for, you know, a variety of different reasons. Like, you know, I'm not gonna go into all the details.
Not the why, but could you just touch on like, what is the, what's your team right now? Who's...
I don't have much, I, we have a, we have a pretty lean team right now, but we, we are, I will say this, I can share that we have hired a new HR Director who is coming from Springfield, we're very excited about. And we actually have hired a, I guess I can say it here now, we have hired a new Director of Finance and Operations who's a Holyoke resident. Anthony Soto is his name, not related to the City Councilor, not the City, former City Councilor, but a different Anthony Soto. He's a Holyoke resident, he's a graduate of Dean.
Would've thought.
That's right. I, I didn't know he was a school person, but Anthony is the Budget Director in the Springfield Public Schools. He is a graduate of Dean Technical and he will be starting here in April as a Director of Operations Finance. He's got a young family in Holyoke, very excited to welcome him. He has been working with us as part of the, in the chamber on some of our budget review. We brought him in as an outside expert and he's, he's agreed to join the team here and I think he's gonna be a huge addition to our school system.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. First, School Committee Woman LeFave?
Thank you, Dr. Shreik.
I thought you already got to ask your questions at School Committee meetings.
I didn't. It's just that I got, I had gotten a text today.
No, of course.
So, many of us here may not know what the process is in respects to involving families and student voices with the extended day program. So maybe if you can go a little bit into that, into how that process works and how are we ensuring that the voices of families and students are being incorporated into the final decision of where we're gonna move forward? I know today I received kind of like a quiz as to what I would like to see, but I'm only given three options and those three options do not include creative arts.
Yep. So I, again, this varies by school and we've, and Erin can speak a little bit to this, but I'll, I'll take, start, she's been overseeing the full school day planning and we have phased in submission from schools on the different aspects of their plan. Each of the schools did have to submit a parent engagement or a community engagement plan to us around how they were going to engage students and families and staff around the process. So, you know, we, the expectation is that parents have a chance to provide input in the process. Now, if that's not happening, that would be a concern that we would have. But, you know, with anything, there's got, many people are gonna have different ideas. The school's gonna have to set, make some decisions and some of those decisions are gonna be supported by some families and not by others. But at the very least, there should be an opportunity. We've really stressed having an open forum for, for families at each school because we don't expect every school's to look the same. In fact, we expect them to look pretty different depending on what the community has to say about the, about what they want in the school. So I don't know if you want to add to that Erin?
Yeah, the other piece I want to add is, the other piece I want to add is that we're, all this, we've had 46% of our families take that culture and climate survey data and 70% of staff and more than 70% of students in grades three through 12. So we're also looking at analyzing that data to make sure, like, if there were certain areas where a school was particularly weakened, that that is being brought into on the plans for the full school day. And then part of that family survey data will be, will schedule, the window closed on February 15th because we wanted, we extended it to give more families a chance to respond. And so we're planning, we're planning by 3:15 or something to have a public parent forum to analyze the data. So that would be areas two. And then if there are any schools that you hear of or anybody hears of where they felt like the, the parent engagement or community engagement in the full school day plans isn't what it probably needs to be or should be, I'd encourage them to talk to the principal directly and also if it still feels like not, definitely reach out to Dr. Shreik or me and then we can do some follow-up. We would love to support that because we obviously want to make sure it's a, you know, it's a student-first, family-first plan.
Erin, I just had a quick follow-up question. You said 46% of families completed the surveys?
Yeah.
What was the breakdown by school? Do you happen to have that information?
We don't have, I don't have, do you have it there or no?
Um, I don't have it, but I can just list that as a follow-up.
We can get that.
I know we, we definitely had a range with McMahon leading at like 85% of responses. And then we had McMahon share out about the things that they did to get such a high response rate, to boost our response rate. We also did talk to the vendor and professor and can, they, they said that any response rate above 30% is, makes like a very solid sample size in that our family response rates were the highest that they had seen in, for what our vendor had worked with, at least our consultant. So we were really appreciative of the efforts that the families went to complete the surveys.
Did that include the paper? The paper?
Yes, it did.
Oh, okay. So the total percentage included the paper?
It includes paper. Yeah, we're almost, yeah, we're almost at 50 with that. I, I mean, I really wanted to get higher, but they, the vendor kept telling me you're crazy to think that that's, I mean, I just would like to have seen 70% too, but, you know, I, having done surveys before, I do think 50% is, is pretty, pretty high. And we're gonna use that information to inform decisions, so.
Some families might have two or three kids, so they answer at once. So, so we looked at it by like...
Separate families.
Yeah, total number of families in the district.
Okay.
And then the, I already brought up the paper surveys, there were a lot of paper surveys, which is why, like, we can't say, oh, the data's available right now because the vendor needs to, like, input those paper surveys.
Counselor Graney?
Uh, yeah. Dr. Shreik, I'm gonna pick my way through this if you will bear with me. I have...
Oh, yeah. Dr. Zright, I'm going to pick my way through this if you will bear with me. I have a little list here.
Sure.
When you speak, when Counselor Jordan spoke of moving the school department headquarters, I've been an advocate of that for the last six years. I originally wanted to move it to Lynch School where they have a woodworking shop, a print shop for special ed kids. We could have put a loading dock there to put the school department, uh, supply station there. You had a library, an auditorium, gymnasium. It was on a bus line. We had an inner courtyard. It is the crossroads of the city. I fought tooth and nail to get that. Didn't happen, so I'm glad to see that we're still working on getting the school department office.
Not too late, no, it's okay.
Secondly, the turnaround plan, I've read that several times, and much of it is repetitive that I have seen before, having served in the school system and on the school committee. But there was one thing that really intrigued me, and I was wondering how that's coming along. And that was the parent university that was, was mentioned in there. I'd like to know how, it's critical that our parents are buying into the education of our kids, and I was wondering how that's going.
Yeah. Well, it's not as going as quickly as I would have liked because we didn't hire a director for that department. She just started two weeks ago. We're looking for the right person to take on that role, and one of her charges is to launch the parent university. So, without her presence, we have a, if you can believe it, we actually have about 23 staff in the district that work with parent engagement and attendance, which I asked the question, "Well, if we have that, that many people doing that work, I would like to believe that our engagement would be, would be stronger than it is." And so, I'm not suggesting that they're not talented folks, but clearly, like, we haven't utilized that staff in a way to really maximize parent involvement. I think the parent university, I've run them in the past in communities I've been, which is a, you know, which is basically a, a conference for families where they can self-select topics that they're interested in, and hear speakers get information on whatever they might need for their child. So, we do plan on doing it, and now that the new director has started, that's one of her charges. So, you should be looking for it soon.
Okay. May I continue? I read the PEC school report that was just recently put out, and it was good to see that several staff members did do the right thing. Page, I think it was page three and page four indicate that there were staff members who did do the right thing, reporting these things to the administration, et cetera, et cetera. I just hope that those, those people have been exonerated and so on and so forth for their good work for the public schools, if you could comment on that.
Yeah, I can see you've done your reading. Pretty impressive, specific pages. I mean, I spent the last, the better half of the last two months really doing an investigation on the situation at PEC, which, you know, frankly, I felt like I learned a great deal about the school system through that process. I will say, you know, there, I think we've, we've addressed appropriately all the situat, you know, any concerns we had with individual staff, including, you know, staff that did the right thing, you know, making sure that they know that, you know, that we, we recognize them for that as well. It was a very complex, difficult situation. I can assure the public that a lot of progress has been made, not perfect. I'm not going to tell you that the program is where we need it to be, but I can assure you that it's, it's in a much different place. The new principal there, Ms. Athas, has done a very good job of bringing this, you know, I think, making sure that the school is well, well-run, well-organized. And, you know, our partners, partnership with the center school has been a very productive one, and continuing to improve the quality of the services in that program.
May I? Third on my agenda, and probably it's an unpopular topic, but I'd like to ask you.
Yep.
The charter schools' effect on publication, public education has been really extensive over the past four or five years. $400 million in funds that are being siphoned out of the public schools. The charter schools have high suspension rates. They have low numbers of sped kids and LLD kids because of suspensions, and these kids all wind up back in the public schools. And some of them, obviously, when I was on the school committee, we had upwards of 40 or 50 coming back from the charter schools into the public school system, and we provided the services for them, yet the charter schools did keep that money. And the, the funding that's being expended by the state to charter schools really gives the charter school an advantage because they, they spend more money on the kids who go to the charter school than they do for our allocation. And I was wondering how, you know, some of the statistics at the state, like Suzanne Bump's report, where there are multiple kids that are on, on, on single lists where they're counting to wait to get into charter schools. I was just wondering how that's going to affect us here in, in the public schools in Holyoke, and how that, that, that funding that's being filtered out of our system is going to, going to hurt us, or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. And in fact, with some of the materials that, I should have introduced Liz LeFond, I'm sorry. I don't know if we want to pass this out. There, one of the, on the initial request was information on charter. So, there is specific numbers of how many students are going to which charters and, in, from Holyoke. I think we have 843 students who go to charters that are Holyoke residents. Look, you know, you ask, again, it's a great question. I, here's, here's how I would answer it. I think there are very strong, there are good charters and there are weak charters, like anything. Like, there's good public schools, traditional public schools and weak ones. I'd never disparage parents for making the choices that they make. I think right now, many parents see the charter schools as a better option for their, for their children, and I understand why that's the case. We've got to increase, you know, I do worry about the cap being lifted for this community because it would represent, right now, if people had those options, they would go. And Holyoke's at its cap right now, so charters that want to expand cannot do so in Holyoke. But in the future, that, that may change, and I, you know, I don't, I don't spend a lot of time, like, studying that political landscape. But if that were to happen, we, we would be in a position where we'd lose a tremendous amount of more funding. And we've got to, we've got to be much more competitive and provide a better product pre-K to 12 to ensure that we, we lose fewer students to charter and to school choice. We lose over $2 million of, of, of funds we lose because of school choice in, in Holyoke. And so, it just, as much as I, I understand those dynamics, and I'm not, there's things that you said I agree with, and there's things I disagree with. But at the end of the day, you know, I believe in public, traditional public education, and I've only worked in systems like that, and I want it to be successful here in Holyoke, and will do everything I can to be competitive with the other choices that exist.
Right. One of my main concerns is the draining of, the draining of funds.
It is a substantial draining, drainage of funds. There's no question.
If I may?
I would like to just get in a few more councils, then I'll come back to you. Is that okay, Counselor Green? One more, last one. Lightning round.
Okay. State administrators and testing.
Yep.
I know Commissioner Chester is on the Board of Pearson's, which is a testing company. I know that Superintendent Peiser is the director.
Secretary Peiser, right?
Secretary Peiser is the director of the FES Program, Family for Excellent Schools in New York City, which there's hedge fund money and so on and so forth. So, it's going to be very difficult, you know, to, to, I worry about the funding coming from DESI coming into the, the city, coming into our public schools because of, of the top guns. Basically, the top guns in the state are proponents of charter schools, and I, I just worry about that. So, you know, the organization, probably that you're well aware of, Broad in Chicago, organization, the organization in Denver Gates's organization are all hedge funds. And, and there is, there's money to be made in charter schools. And what worries me is that money that's being filtered out going for profit. I don't know if the charter school pays a tax on their profits. There's, there's a lot of questions that aren't really, really above board on the table, and I just wonder if you could comment on those things.
Yeah, again, I, I don't, I, I, I hear a lot of the noise about, you know, testing and, and those relationships. At the end of the day, you know, I, I don't, I have, I do have interaction with the commissioner. I think he wants, you know, if you look at what, what's happened in Lawrence, they've done it with an in-district model. They have not, it has not been a charter model. They've been very successful in moving the district and moving the needle for kids. I do think that testing has its place. I don't, I'm not, I don't really get too consumed about who, you know, what the relationships are. I do think that the park is a better assessment. People ask me that all the time. What do you think about the MCAS versus the park assessment, which is the Pearson assessment? I happen to think it's, my, my child goes to a public school, I'd much rather her take the park because it's a much more, it prepares her, well, when she's, when she's old enough, it'll prepare her more for what she's going to experience in college. So, I prefer children. It's less invasive. It's less time-consuming. I think it's a better test. But I do worry about the amount of assessments that we give kids. I do think that's something we need to pay attention to as a district. I don't want children spending all their time testing, and when we talk about some of the stress that children have that, that we may be inducing, it might, some of it is about the, the quantity of assessing and so forth. I don't really see, I don't feel the, an agenda coming to Holyoke about charters and, you know, businesses, and I, I don't feel, feel that. I mean, they wouldn't have hired somebody who was a, I've never worked for any of those organizations. I've only worked in traditional schools. So, I think I, I wouldn't have taken this job if I didn't believe in what the, the power of neighborhood public schools can be. But we've got to get better because there are a lot of, you know, there's, there's stiff competition.
Just one quick example of testing. If one of our youngsters, third grade, so is, is asked the question on the MCAS that, "Where do you find seagulls?" And it's an open-ended question, and the answer obviously is at the seashore.
Yep.
But one of our youngsters answers, "At the Kmart Plaza," and the youngster has marked wrong. That youngster was right and the test was wrong.
That's, I wouldn't disagree.
Thank you, Counselor Greenie. Counselor Vica?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Zright.
Sure.
You'll hear me echo a couple of the comments around the central office, and I'm really happy to hear that you're focusing so much more back to the schools and direct contact with the students. And I am 100% supportive of using our money in a better way than paying rent. However, I'm also very interested in the comment that you made about exploring the use of a currently-owned building because I just think the resources are very limited in terms of us buying a building. And in referencing, I want to say five or six years ago, as Counselor Greenie did, the feedback came to us that the moving costs would be prohibitive. But I'm hoping that with the advances in technology that have occurred since then, you know, wireless and all of that, and the smaller footprint that you would be envisioning for the office, that it might be a more viable possibility this time. And I just hope there'll be a cost-benefit analysis brought to the whole question. And so, I just appreciate consideration in that regard.
Sure, sure. Yep.
I also read the PEC school report, and I work with seniors in a variety of conditions, but they could be described as frail and with behaviors in a similar way as the students. And so, what I'm interested in knowing, one of the things that jumped out at me was the use of restraints and the evident lack of training that was in the setting there. And I'm wondering if we can compare the past three months and how, you know, the amount and type that has had to be utilized in the school compares to the nature and amount that were referenced in the report.
So, I can, I don't have the information right here, but I've spent a lot of time looking at that data. In, our numbers are way down in restraints this year, and January was the lowest that, that the program has seen in two years.
Excellent.
But it doesn't mean that it's, I still think it's happening more than it should. I don't, I think if you're restraining a child multiple times for any reason, then, then you really got to think about what, you know, whether that's the appropriate placement and, and whether we're doing right by the child in that setting. And so, we have a tremendous amount of work around training, and so much of that, and also around the district, is about training. And if you talk to our teachers, they'll tell you that they are open and want more support and training around de-escalation, around working with students who have, who experience trauma. And that is on us. That's on my office to do that. And I think that's a great need in Holyoke right now. I think our staff, they're very well-intentioned, but I don't think they all have the, the tools at their disposal. When a child is, presents with, you know, with a, you know, presents in a way that's, that's challenging or, or difficult, I think we don't always know how to engage appropriately, and so, and many times, we exacerbate the situation rather than de-escalate it in a way that allows the child to continue on with their learning. Not to say that, that would work for every child, but I, I, I just think a lot of it comes, comes to the support and training we give to our staff. We are going to have a trauma conference that we're hosting. It was in the report too, I think on April 4th, for our staff, well, for the public, around trauma, and I think it's something that the community has to really wrap their arms around. We have children who come to our school every day that experience a tremendous amount at home, and we have to create a school environment that's supportive of what they, of what they need. And I, I worry that that doesn't happen enough in our schools.
I thank you for your comments, and I'm glad to hear that. I mean, in the care of elders, it's been a long and many-year curve relative to restraint-free environments, so, you know, it's sort of a cultural thing in our society. But it was a little off-putting to get a feeling in the report that the kids were coming to school and kind of getting more of the same. And so, I'm really happy that there is the emphasis on taking a different approach to the intervention.
And, and we're going to have ongoing monitoring, so there's going to be accountability for us to be sure that we are making a positive impact in the environment and the program.
And I just want to close by saying that I'm just extremely appreciative of your openness. I've been struck by the outreach. I mean, I've just sensed and felt more outreach and follow-up since I've been involved in the system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Co-Chairman Brunel?
Yeah, just, and we've, a few people have touched on it with the central office and that. And I know we talked the other day about maybe coming back in a month or so and discussing it more further more in, in the committee. But, you know, we did talk about Lynch. It's something that we had at our grasp the last time. And for whatever reasons, I mean, you know, I'll say it again, nine of us on the school committee voted for it. One person voted against it, and I understand, you know, that group that's coming in for the big development, CVS, up there for, that's our big development that's going to save the city. I think it'd be a wiser thing to look at, hopefully, Dr. Zright would look at that more of a central office, more of perhaps even for, like you said, for essential supply and even as a school to use that for early childhood or whatever the, the effects may be. Because if you're really going to put a CVS over, over, you know, if we're talking hotels and other things that are really going to drive an economy in Holyoke, then obviously, that's something you got to look at. But if you're looking at a CVS on that corner, I mean, oh my God, really? There's, there's even a question between that and, and our kids. It's, it's just something. I want you to talk to, I know you're, you're meeting with the, discussions with the mayor, which scares me. And I'll be blunt, but you've got to make your own decision as to what you think is the best for the school system and not what Room One is going to say. And I said it to you privately. I'm saying it to you publicly too. I don't care what the feedback is from the mayor. You know, if you're going to take a CVS over a Lynch school, the possibilities of, of doing our central office, they're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars and selling another building and, and that, and millions of dollars if we have to do a new school, because some of our schools are antiquated. You know, a Lynch school that's in pretty damn good shape, we really need to look at those in the next, next meeting. So, I won't talk about it more tonight, but I do want to put that on the out there for, for our next meeting.
And to just echo the co-chair's statements, actually, we, as a city council, passed on Tuesday night two orders before this committee, and actually, one of them was around the headquarters for the school department, so that will be before us next month. And we are going to send out invitations to all department heads, the mayor's office. So, that is actually the topic for next month's meeting, as well as inviting Iliana in front of us to come speak with us as well. She might be scared after this event, but that's okay.
Oh, no.
School, City Council, Ward One, Gladys LaBra Martinez.
So, my question, I, I, I don't know if you had a, a chance to get a handle in regards to the youth, the children that are coming to the community because they're sheltered out of the city or transportation. I know we've had, in the past, when I was at the board, bills that were kind of late in the game, being paid by the transportation, that it's huge. What, what do we have on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a good date in front of me, Gladys. I'm sorry on that. I, that's not something I have. I have a lot of other. You're talking about homeless transportation? Yeah, it's, it's, it is, it's, in a lot of ways, it's an unfunded mandate that, you know, obviously, we need to provide. We want to provide. But it is, it's hard to budget because it's a moving target. I think the, the district anticipated that with the hotel disappearing, that there would be a reduction in that. But we haven't seen a reduction. But we haven't seen a reduction in homeless at all. In fact, we've seen just as much, maybe in different schools, than Donahue was their their enrollment dropped when the, I guess it was the hotel was taken down. But we still see the same number of homeless families, you know, just spread out across the district. It is a it is a real challenge, but you know, the students deserve and should have, you know, the transportation they need to get to to and from school. But it is a burden on the district in terms of of financial constraints.
And I the reason I I ask the question is because as we're looking in Holyoke, having an eye from all levels, right? The AYP is actually measured by, right? The children's attendance and all of that. And that is a that's an issue that it does affect us. And I think that for you, you know, for all of us sake, that we keep an eye on this as close as possible.
I think the district has done a really good job around attendance, though I have to say. I mean, for a district with the transience and the, you know, the the churn of families often and and the amount of newcomers we have to the district. The attendance has been very strong and I think that's a credit to the work that's been done, some of the Helly Initiative work. But that's not to say that we can't, you know, we we shouldn't continue to keep an eye on that. I also worry about the level of service that we give those families, not just about them coming to school, but what are the supports? That's why one of the recommendations in the turnaround plan is about a is having a apparent resource center, which I really believe strongly that Holyoke needs. You know, I know that in Lase had the center, some of you were part of that. It's unfortunate that that doesn't exist because we get questions from families all the time. And I don't always, you know, it's they ask one person, they don't know the answer. It's really confusing for families. If it's confusing to someone that's, you know, educated, speaks English, to our families that are new, it's too complicated for them. We should have a place they can go and I'm we're we're happy to do that as part of our work in the assignment center. But that's one of our charges to develop a resource center for families.
And and thank you for sharing that as when I asked that question is it's because I truly believe that every child, regardless of where they're coming from, they're looking for the same support.
That's absolutely right.
And it is the reason why I bring it up, that you know, we continue to support these families. And if any way in ourself, you know, from all of us sitting here, I'm hoping that we can help in any way that we can. Because I know some of these families, sometimes it's unfortunate situations, so thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zric. And I just to kind of piggyback, I just wanted to kind of make a, you know, a statement. We clearly as, you know, this body and this actually committee, we're actually very blessed that this is the, I guess, the only committee that has a majority of Latinos. So all four out of the five elected Latinos sit on this committee. So I would love to hear you actually hablar directamente a nuestra comunidad latina, speak directly to the Latino community, what your outreach has been. You have done and to echo John and Linda, a phenomenal job, I think. I would love to hear a little bit more about your outreach strategy to the Latino community because it is what's touched my heart. And you know, I left in Lase when the family recess center closed. So I specifically want to hear kind of like your progress within the Latino community. You've done so much work about that. We've heard a little bit about it tonight through the policies. But if you can speak directly to that, it would, I'm sure, warm the Latinos' hearts.
You asking me to speak in Spanish too?
No, 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 you don't have to speak in Spanish, but I'm just saying, you can if you want.
I I don't think I actually don't think we've done, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pat ourselves on the back for that. I mean, I think I I know what I where I want to be, we want to be. I don't think our our many of our families have a voice yet. Both, there are many that will say things silently to me or I get stories through other people. But there's still a culture of fear in this community around expressing concerns and questions. And also about saying positive things about the about schools too. I just think people are, there is some fear. I also think the one real benefit out of this PEC report is that that was the first time I was at a meeting with families where we had a sizable group of Latino families and they were very candid about how the school system has failed their child. And it was hard to hear, it was hard to listen, but it was the the truth. It was their truth, it was their narrative, it was their experience. And I know that in the last two months, I've gotten more feedback from families that I had never heard from before. You know, typically I hear, you know, there's there's a small, there's a there's a group that you hear from more than than others. But this was the first time I seen a broader group of families that have come forward to share concerns. I think that's healthy. I think that's healthy. We need more and more families to share, you know, their questions and concerns with the with the system. But I think we, you know, again, I I brought the example of the secondary redesign meeting the other night. It was a there was a core group and I'm very appreciative the families were there. But we need, we need to get the word out to more families. And doing it at, I think we have to be more willing to be out in the neighborhoods to share the message and to know the informal circles. It's it's about community organizing. I mean, you know that. I I saw I saw it in Chicago, I'm not Chicago, everybody thinks I'm from Chicago, I'm not. But I learned what organizing was, being in Chicago, that's a city of organizing. And that and the and the apparent, the level of parent engagement was unlike anything I'd ever seen in working in Boston and certainly here. And so that's I see our role as organizing families because we need all the all the voices to be heard and at the table. And I know people say, well, good luck, you know, it can happen. Because I I really do believe that our families want what's best for their kids. But you know, out of some of its fear, there's a lot of its language, still, still people go to our schools and nobody can speak to them. You know, we still have families walk into schools and there's nobody that can greet them that can speak with them. We have zero Latino administrators right now in our schools. I'm not saying, I mean, I'm not, I don't, I want the best educators in front of our, but the senior team at the district level. I mean, I think I count for point five as a Cuban, right? But but I mean, I'm but look, I mean, until we hired Eliana and we're hiring Anthony, we had no Latinos on the seat, like at the senior leadership team of the school district. That is important and it and and that's the same at the school base. And I'm not saying I want the best teachers in our schools. So I I at the end of the day, I don't really care what their background is, but we want more. I do want more staff that can communicate with families. And I do want our, I do want staff that represent our students in that, but that's about our recruitment efforts. And we've just that that's on us to improve that as a school system.
Let me just take, yeah, just a quick example of, I know how he's concerned about that issue is none of us that that served before and the and the school committee before the past and present ones, no one of any of us realized until he came in that there wasn't one message from the central office in Spanish. It was all English, the whole thing. And that's the first thing he picked up on like the first day or first two days is there was not one message.
Well, I'd like to know that, yeah, I do know that these ladies here have have advocated that in the past. I know being a community organizer, so I don't think, you know.
I've never heard of it and no, I know it ever changed before, but that's the first thing he addressed when he came in, and I'm just saying.
I'm glad.
Just about how hard it was to get a Spanish recording when they when they, I'm I'm, I don't know that that's improved yet, so I'm not taking any credit.
So it happened that Avanza, there was a group that it actually was initiated here many years ago and through Gustavo Costa. These minutes, if you recall this, that they were translated as he left or everything diluted, I guess. That that ended, it was very, at that time, if I recall this, I've been gone for like six years now. But and this was like five, my beginning of my time there too. There was a lot of activity. People were coming up, they were coming. And I, another thing, and I'm glad that you're really bringing this up and we're really coming and bringing the elephant out of the box here and in the room. It's in the room and it's a reality. But I do remember at times, people would, more the fear that it is, it's also repercussion. Because you have individuals who did a step up and at the same time, they're reprehended for what they are actually saying or doing. So we we also have to be, you know, open minded to what it's going to come out of this. Because I already heard, I'm hearing already the rumors, I can show you emails that I receive at my house. I text, I people receive, I receive texts. I'm an advocate and a cheerleader, whether I'm in politics or not in politics, because this has been my role. You know, I have four childrens in my, you know, who went through the school system. An advocate myself, and I know the challenges I've had. Seven grandchildren now, and I understand the the, you know, the struggle. But the thing at the same time is that a parent tries to advocate at times and also they're receiving this, you know, kind of like, you're not right, you're not wrong, you know. And and we need to kind of clear that so people feel more open to doing so.
Yes, and to piggyback off of Gladys and Elglades, Dostado Lopez, those who came before me, also on the council and on the community organizing side. There's something to be said about institutional racism and poverty. So I think that's a big portion of what was occurring for years. And I, you know, only go back to Betty Medina, Lichtenstein from in Lase telling me how the mills were founded and when public education was mandatory in Massachusetts, the mill owners went to the public education system and the schoolchildren would be in school less hours so they could work in the mills more hours. So that's the foundation of our education, so I have to agree with that. Thank you. And I would like to just acknowledge, because we have about 10 minutes left to make a full hour, under the Bartley method, Councilor President Jordain.
Thanks. Steve, once again, I wanted to echo to your your transparency, your accessibility has just really been fantastic. And I I really do appreciate that, certainly on behalf of the entire city council. One thing I wanted to also follow up with you on is regarding school transportation, was kind of touched on tangentially here a moment ago. Where do we stand in terms of our financial obligations around school transportation? I know there was some concerns, I believe you had expressed at one point, that perhaps some additional dollars were needed in terms of the financial calculus of all this. Where are we at at this stage, seven months?
Yeah, so we we were not fully funded for transportation going into the school year. We were between 800,000 and a million dollars short in transportation. We have been working with the city on a number of different solutions. We have absorbed a lot of that within our budget. But that means that funds that were supposed to go to schools have been diverted to to cover transportation. I mean, we've had, some of that was savings and staffing because we had a turnover of some serious, significant turnover. And then you hire new folks on the pay scale, or you know, lower on the pay scale. But but that's not a, you know, that's not a winning solution for the future. I don't, I'm, I don't know all the, I didn't, this wasn't a budget, I I'm not trying to pass the buck, but I wasn't part of the design of this budget. But I do know that we were short in transportation. I obviously would want it to be fully funded. We are, Erin, one of her outstanding roles that she has taken on is to really look at our transportation contract and to really look at how we can reduce some of the costs there. I mean, transportation costs are going up everywhere. We found out that it wasn't as bad a contract as I initially thought, but it wasn't fully funded. And we're and if we're going to provide transportation to students as part of the full day, some enrichment programming at the Boys and Girls Club and things like that. We are, we're trying to see if we can, tell me if I'm I'm okay with this, maybe you should save me from from this. But we're trying to be creative about our transportation funding and Erin, you can talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, it's still, it's definitely still a work in progress. And Lenny Gibbons, our Director of Tech and Operations is helping me through it. But right now, we spend about $5 million on transportation, three and a half million of which goes to students who have special, special needs. And then the other 1.5 million dollars is is for just the general large bus transportation. Holyoke does a, is more generous than the state requires in terms of getting, providing buses to get kids to schools. So that's why we might be a little bit higher than other cities.
How so?
For, I think it's it's somewhere, and I'm sorry, I can follow up, but it's either, if you're in grades K through six, you would, I believe, the state says you only need to be bused to school if it's more than two miles away. But we bus kids at just one mile away. And obviously, that is a probably a big contributor to why we have stronger attendance. So we're definitely not proposing reducing busing services based on mileage. And then we also provide busing for middle school students, like seventh and eighth graders, and you wouldn't need to. And then we provide vouchers for high school kids, is my understanding, too, for the city bus. And then some things that we're looking into, we could, we did look, we did talk about, should we go back out to bid for the bus contract? But buses, the bus companies are seeing the bids that districts are getting back are 20% higher in bus in busing costs. Whereas our increase next year would only be 3%. So we feel like it's safer to stay with the existing budget, but we're still trying our contract. But we could still reduce costs by up to 10%, which would be a half a million dollars if we could do it. So we're going to try to see with the full school day, since we won't need to do two runs in the morning because the kids will be going to school at the same time. We're hoping that that will be able to allow us to reduce the total number of bus runs, so.
We also provide transportation to Catholic school students as well, many of whom are not necessarily free and reduced lunch students. So that that is more generous than other communities provide as well.
300,000 on servicing kids who who go to parochial or other schools.
I wonder how much their parents pay in property taxes, though.
Right.
We might want to do that analysis.
Yep.
Because I'll bet you it's substantial.
Yep.
It's probably more than 300,000. So the the other point I wanted to to make and and ask you about is I heard an interesting statistic, which said that 16% of high school students are dropping out. I had seen that statistic. Is that, does that sound right?
In in Holyoke?
Holyoke, yeah.
The number is, no, it's it's less than that. It's, I have it right here. I think it's 7%.
Seven?
Yep.
Okay.
It might be just off, but it's not 16%.
All right. Last question I had from a constituent was regarding teacher recruitment and retention. How how is that going these days in terms of?
See my pin here? Teach Western Mass. Anyway, no, that's.
Oh, is that right? Nice.
That's what it is, yeah. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
So basically, the gist of the question from my constituent was, you know, very interested to know, are we keeping the teachers we need to keep? Are we finding the teachers we need to find? And are we going to be able to have, you know, the this, really, I mean, as everything we've talked around here is all about revolving this whole entire system around the classroom. Not out of the classroom, but in the classroom. Are we going to have the people we need that are daily today interacting with the kids? How is that? That's the whole pivotal of this whole entire equation. How are we doing on that?
You're absolutely right. And so today, that was our entire conversation, we were preparing the budget for next year, is when we talk about investing funds back in the schools, we 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 know we have to compensate our teachers better than they are right now. If you look at our compensation right now, it is lower than many of the communities around us. And if we're going to a fuller day, you're you're exacerbating that even more. So it will drive people away from teaching in our schools. So we have all the different towns around here, we're looking at pay scales, and we are trying to create a compensation system that will be competitive. And so, but it's, we want the right people, we want the best people here. And we we, our teachers have said, they they, that's a big factor for them, is compensation, working conditions and compensation. In terms of recruitment, we've we've just launched this Teach Western Mass, you can go on the website, I can send the link, which is a recruitment effort with Springfield, the empowerment zone, the middle schools in Springfield, to recruit teachers to our district. We're trying, instead of starting in August, well, we didn't start in August, but instead of starting in May or June to hire teachers. We were, last year, we hired 126 people basically from June on. We 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 should be hiring people now. And we've already offered positions to people, even without knowing where they're going to go. If they're talented, they have, in the areas that we need, which are special education, ELL, sciences, we're offering them positions. And then we'll assign them later on, once we know what the, where the attrition is. You know, we just don't know retirements and so forth. So we're we're being a lot more aggressive in the recruitment process. We've we've hired, recruited, we have a position posted for recruiter right now. So we have somebody full time, that's all they're doing is recruiting talent to Holyoke.
Well, that's that's really important. I'm very encouraged by that statement, you know, a great teacher's worth their weight in gold.
Absolutely.
And we need to, we need to recognize that, we need to compensate for that. And the fact of the matter is, you know, when we think of how many people's lives they touch in the course of their career, I mean, tremendous impact. And you know, we need to be competitive to make sure we've got the best. I'm very concerned because of, you know, you got to think, if you're a prospective teacher and I could go in many different places. I mean, if you're the best or among the best in your field, right? It's just like anything else in the market, you could go a lot of places. My fear is, is it just too much drama to go to Holyoke? We're going to maybe have longer day, which is great and I, you know, in many regards. But you know, I want to make sure we're appealing to that class of the very best.
No question.
It's the only way you're going to make this work.
That's the, that's what, that's what we spent our day talking about today, is we were putting up numbers around the, the amount of money we are cutting from central office and that we're moving around the district is almost exclusively to to redo our performance compensation system. So I think, and we'll be able to share that when we present our budget, because that's where our funds are going.
And we'll be here soon, right? Budgets are due. And we'll be here soon, right? Budgets are due at the city council first week of May, so we're looking forward to it.
We love talking about budgets. I'd like to acknowledge Councilor Bartley.
Thank you.
Sorry, one second. Before I do, I would like to acknowledge the fact that we have Ward Seven School Committee Member Niles Corchene. I'm sorry, we acknowledge everyone else in the room, but not you, sir. I apologize. And we have Councilor-at-Large Joe McGivern who came in, the Dean of the City Council is here with us. We love that. Thank you, sir. Councilor Bartley, sorry.
Good to see you, Mark. Okay, so I'll be pretty brief, Doctor, but, Doctor, you're about to finish your first year. And first of all, compliments to Nelson for putting this meeting together and to the joint committee. We haven't had too many meetings in my four-plus years of this particular committee, so it's good that we're together. And Doctors Reich and Erin and Liz, thank you for being here. Doctor, you've been here not quite a year yet. What's your, just from a personal standpoint, what's your sense of how long you think you'd like to stay in the city of Holyoke? I mean, I know that the, when the receiver's appointed, you know, it's unclear as to your term, but.
Is this a trick question?
No, it's not a trick question. I mean, you think you'll be here two years, five years, until the job's done? What's your sense?
I mean, I gave my commitment I was going to stay till the job is done. So I don't know what that timeframe is. I mean, I, I don't have, this is my home state. This is, this is the kind of community I wanted to work in. I wanted to work in a gateway city in Massachusetts. So, you know, obviously, the goal is that, that we turn the schools back over to the city. But I, I have no plans to, you know, I plan to be here for the long haul, you know, but, but there is, but it's hard to pinpoint when that's going to be. We have a lot of work to do, and I want to be sure that it's self-sustaining. You know, it's nice that we get some extra resources now. I have an extra position that I wouldn't otherwise have, and that position's not going to, I mean, sorry to tell Erin, but that position's not going to be here in, you know, three years or four years. So we've got to make sure that it's self-sustaining. And so it's hard to answer that question.
Well, I think.
But, but the commitment is there.
I think your answer was a.
And I'm married to someone that's got roots in Holyoke, so the family's not really going to let me.
No, we, we know that, yeah, we know that. So, so I think your answer was a fine one. And I want to thank you, Steve, for coming to my Ward Three monthly meeting last month. It was, he was there for a good 45, 50 minutes and answered a lot of questions. One of the questions that was kind of being brought up over and over again happened to do with, I think, with the Chapter 2222, Doctor, the Acts of 2012, is that what it was?
Chapter 222, yeah.
Okay, can you kind of, okay, so, and so that was, that was kind of the theme of that night. And I don't want to regurgitate the whole thing because we'll be really tied up. But, but that came about as a result of a couple of instances at Holyoke High School. And instances have been happening even in honors classes, my understanding. So, and I believe your response that night was, there has to be a little more education, a little more training with, with the teachers. So what they can do and cannot do. So in the months it's happened since, what have, have we, have we kind of thought about that some more?
Yeah, so we, I mean, I've gotten a lot of feedback from families about their concerns about how the culture and climate at, I hear that at other, a lot of schools, but I've, you know, most recently at Holyoke High. And one of the things that I think Mr. Sullivan has been working really hard to put some things in place in response to questions and concerns. We have a meeting scheduled on the 23rd, which is Tuesday, next Tuesday night, where we're going to, we're going to share some information. He had an improvement council meeting where parents voiced some of the topics they'd like to be addressed, and Chapter 222 was one of them. Along with restorative justice was a concern that people had, what is restorative justice? What is, you know, how do you discipline at the school? What's the role of the SRO, you know, the security officer? Each of the high schools has an SRO. And so we're, we've prepared a session for families that walks through some of those and then gives a chance for families to ask questions. And so I definitely want to be responsive to those concerns and questions. I think there is some misunderstanding, but there's also some things that the school can do better. And I think Mr. Sullivan, I've been impressed with his eagerness to take it on. And be, you know, he's the leader of that building and has been really responsive and takes feedback very seriously from families. And so I know, I'm, I think the meeting will be a good one in terms of engaging with families, so that's, that's open to any family.
Well, I hope you can continue to speak about that and write about it, perhaps, in your, in your, in your regular correspondence with the city. So just a couple of brief things, Mr. Chairman. So we did, we briefly touched on Lynch School tonight. You know, I'm not going to rehash it at this, too deeply. But let's, let's just, let's face the facts. That building was a bloody disaster as far as asbestos and a lot of other negative things are going on there. So just, just to say, we could have gone in there and have people go in there, it's just so unrealistic. It's being disingenuous to the public, frankly. So the proprietor, the person that possibly might go in there has cleaned out a lot of asbestos, cleaned it all out, as a matter of fact. Now, what's going to happen down the road is going to come before this body. And so we'll, we'll have those, in fact, there's a zone change petition in ordinance right now, and so we're going to, we're going to talk about that. And I don't know where that's going to lead, but we're going to give it a fair hearing and see where it goes. But the bottom line there is, you know, we got to stop the demagoguery on that because we've got a city with a really thin commercial tax base. So when I hear the demagogues going on, on and on about Lynch School and how it used to be, well, we're not in those days anymore. So, so we're going to talk about that. And I, so I want the public to realize that the commercial tax base has got to come back up to the best of our ability. So I'm just going to say that for record. Then, if I could, Doctors Reich, you made the front page of the Boston Globe again on the lead article on Wednesday.
What did I do?
Well, Peck School made the front page again. But the one, the one nice thing about the article is about 17 paragraphs in, it said that massive improvements have been made. So the school administration should be complimented upon that. The headline was very negative. The first 16 paragraphs are pretty negative, and finally get to, oh, it's been a massive turnaround since then. So, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
The last thing, well, one, one thing, this city council, by the way, has passed a couple million dollars in bonding to improve the Emerald Chain all around Peck and Holyoke High School. So those dollars are going to start to come to fruition at some point this spring, summer, and fall. In other words, rehab enclosure, McKenzie, Roberts, et cetera, like that. I think that's just very important to point out. So, and in my time here, I don't recall, Mr. President, you can, you can correct me, one vote in this city council against a proposal from the school department. Not one vote, despite the fact that they're generally last-minute, late-filed orders that some of us don't like. But, but gee whiz, they've all been supportive. So this body has been very supportive of the city council, of the school department. My last comment is going to be, it always seems strange to me, Doctor, well, before I got, and I've only been on this board for a little over four years now, but it always seems strange that there's, there's this huge disconnect between the city government and the school department. So over here, we've got 120 million, 230 million dollar city budget, and we've got a similar budget in the school department. And there's, there's just, and the school department meets, meets down at Dean and Yurovitz Suffolk, and the city government is here in City Hall. And so now we're talking about, well, what are we going to do with Suffolk Street? Meanwhile, we've got empty rooms all around this building. We've got empty rooms on that City Hall annex. We've got a whole empty building on Suffolk Street that we own. And I don't hear any talk about the school department at all. At least, it'd be nice if some connection with the school department was actually in City Hall. You are, in fact, a part of the city government. It would be nice if there was something where it was, I mean, here's buildings, there's building space that can be used, it can be made available. It'd be nice if it was considered, whatever the rent is over there, and I don't know what the numbers are, but if those monies were used to rehab some of the properties here that we have in this little cluster of buildings, perhaps there could be some, perhaps there could be some synergy of use.
I mean, I just, I'll just say this. I, I have no, I'm open to any, I don't, I'm not, I don't have a particular angle around where we are. I just want a space. I don't need a, I'm not, I really could, I don't like to spend time in my office. I'm not looking for anything spectacular. I think we just need a space to do our work. So I'm, I'm open and to different suggestions and ideas. I certainly support the idea of spending less and getting more of the resources to where it belongs. So whatever, you all know the facilities you own better than I do. I will say this, from the school's standpoint, we are tight in our schools right now. We have, we have space in Dean and we have space at Peck. That's about it. And our buildings are not in good shape. So we have, we are tight. We don't have a lot of space in our schools. We've got a growing program at MedCaf that we need to find a location for. That dual-language program is our highest. There's a ton of interest in it, and it's very tight. So we don't have a tremendous amount of space. But I'm very open to suggestions. I really don't need a palace for the central office. We'll go anywhere as long as, especially if it'll save money, that will eventually go back to kids.
Thank you so much. School Committee Woman, Lefebvre?
So I'm going to go back to the transportation, because for me, it's the first time that I hear that we paid for parochial school transportation for the students. So can you tell me exactly, all the children, what schools are, whatever that we're paying for? I mean, do we also pay for the charter school transportation, or is that through what's already given to them that the charter school pays?
Charter, that's part of the allocation that the charters get.
So that the charter gets.
Yeah. And they arrange their own transportation independent of us.
This has been for a long time. I'm going to, I'm going to assume that we've been paying for the parochial schools' transportation to children that are sent there?
Yeah, and some of it were required to because of distance, so, because they, we should, we can present, we can prepare a presentation for the school committee on this, on transportation, if that would be helpful, because it sounds like there's a lot of questions about transportation.
Should be the joint committee. We want to hear that, too.
Well, come to a school committee meeting, too. No, no, but we're, we're happy to, we're happy to present that, that information. Because I don't want to misspeak about that, but I think what we're digging into it right now to better understand, because it is such a big chunk of our, of our budget, and it's obviously the subject of a lot of questions, and we'd be happy to present. Wherever that is, we'll take the show on the road, wherever it needs to be.
So that, okay, yeah, no, that's good.
But we do.
Because I just want to know if it's a requirement that you're required to do.
We're required, if it's a distance, the, same thing for the, there's a, there's a law around the distance from school and providing transportation. The same would apply to Catholic schools as well. Or, not just Catholic schools, but the private schools in the community. So there's three, but there are three schools in Holyoke that we, we have children that attend.
Like First Lutheran, Blessed Sacrament, Mater.
That's right.
And we provide for the transportation for those.
Yeah, should you mention that?
Yep.
Yeah, and if you can just get us the number of students that are from, along with how, how many, if it's past the two-mile mark, how we're saying that if they live further than two miles.
We can get a breakdown, we can get a full breakdown on all students in transportation, yep.
So I'm just checking for time with you, Doctors Reich. We're at an hour and 20 minutes. Are you still good to go? We have a few others on deck.
I'm happy to stay as long as you need me to stay.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you. Councilor-at-Large, Joe McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I first would just apologize for being late to both the committee, to the doctor, and everyone here. I came from a HEDIC meeting, Holyoke Economic Industrial Development Corporation, and there's some good news that's going to be announced in 10 days. And the one-hour meeting lasted two hours, but it was worth it. I, it's a pleasure to meet you, Doctor, for the first time. And I just wanted to piggyback off of Councilor Jordan's comments, questions, and some of your comments and responses into one area, but with two, two questions. Like, and the first one is, recruitment is necessary. And I certainly commend joining with Springfield and understanding the need to recruit replacement teachers into, into the educational community. But I didn't hear any mention of what we're doing to keep our qualified, good teachers that we have. And I believe we have a number of them throughout the public schools. I don't think you disagree with that. But I think we have to also show the teachers that have been with us and the struggles that they've gone through with a very difficult population, you know, that they are, that they are worthy of what we can do to help them, both in compensation, but also recognizing their efforts. Recruitment, teaching, services requires the city to generate revenue, whether it's the schools, public safety, DPW. The budget is a crux of most of our, our discussions. And I think you've heard a lot of that this evening. When, when you look, when, when things, when things are in the state of change, people leave for different reasons. Some are asked to leave, some are forced to leave, some leave because they're going to, in their minds, a different, greener pasture. It causes one area of problems with us on the city side of the budget, and that's the unemployment insurance because we are self-insured. And I can only ask that you would work with our, with our human resource department, our personnel department in that area. I think there's been some discussion about this because in a given year, if we cannot control that, especially in the tight budget that we are facing, if we cannot control or anticipate those costs, they can really throw us for a loop. Since I've served on the city council on three occasions, we have never hesitated when asked to spend above net school spending for worthy projects on the school sites. And I think that effort will always be there, that mentality of the city council will always be there. But if we don't have the money to give, it's very difficult. And if you could work with us on that. But is there anything being done to, to help out or to, to address our good teachers, our, you know, tenured teachers that have been there?
Yeah, and we talked about this a little bit before, but definitely the compensation is part of it. And I would, I mean, as part of receivership, we could have, we could ask everybody to reapply for their roles. And we didn't do that because I think there are so many talented, dedicated people who are committed to this city and to the school system. So we, so we do want to incentivize those people. Some of it comes in the form of compensation, so that's one area. This, and we talked about how we're restructuring our compensation system to be competitive and attractive. I think the second thing is about working conditions, right? So if you look at the surveys that were done of the staff, the staff will, said, the results were so shockingly low in terms of having the right resources to do their jobs. I know I hear a lot from teachers about technology, as an example, and so we've got to give them the tools. If you're, if you're a teacher who, many teachers are coming in the profession, they want to use the tools, technology tools, in their classroom because it opens the door for kids. They are pretty frustrated by our infrastructure, and they don't even, we don't even give them a device. So one of the things we've committed to is giving each teacher a device to start the next school year that they can use in their classroom, which I think is a huge step. I wasn't going to do that until our infrastructure was better, and Lenny Gibbons has done it. We've gotten some money from the federal government for E-Rate to improve the infrastructure. By the start of next year, the network will be in a much better position to be able to do the kinds of things in classrooms we need to. So that's just one example of giving teachers the tools they need to do their job. And, you know, if you're a teacher, if you want to do the right kind of work, you want to know that you have the tools at your disposal. So that's another thing we've got to improve on. And out of all the data from the teachers, it was most eye-opening that they don't feel like they have the resources to do their job. So again, that's on my, that's my job. We talk about diverting money back to the schools. How do we make sure we give teachers access to those materials they need to be successful?
Sorry, can you work with us on the unemployment issue?
So I do, I will say, there's good news on unemployment thus far. I think we were, we're projecting actually $300,000 less than what we had anticipated going into this year. I mean, that's today. I don't know what will, what will happen, but I know that that's, that was an area we were trending in the right direction. To your point, though, and to Mr. Bartley, or I guess he's not here, but I think there are examples where the city and the schools can work more closely together on some of the back office things, that we may have duplication. And again, that's, you know, those are resources that could be used elsewhere if we can, you know, consolidate. So I don't, I dare to say what that is right now, because I, I don't want to commit to anything. Yeah, but there are ways that I think we could work more closely together, given that we actually, we represent such a significant part of the overall staff and resources in the, in the city. So that way, you know, a lot of towns or cities and schools have worked to consolidate some of the services. And HR may be one area, you know, in the future.
Thank you, Doctor. And I just have to, you know, correct the chairman about myself being the Dean of the city council. And that, the oldest member of the city council, nor I am I the longest-serving elected official in Holyoke. That goes to none other than Ronnie Collmore.
That's right, that's right.
Just to follow up real quickly is, last night, I forget who, Doctor, that's been doing the, looking at the budget and the.
Doctor Bear?
Yes, and she gave us a presentation. They're still looking at other ways of saving the budgets. But two quick things were, you know, the city has immunities, we have immunities.
That's right. That's right.
That should be something, an automatic, quick save there, and hopefully the savings will go back to the school department.
That's right.
And then, you know, we'll be back in, like I said, in, in the next few weeks or a month or so, or after to, to discuss that. And what was the other one, too? There's two quick ones that we-
Immunis was one, and then-
Immunis was one, but some, simple things like that, there's no reason for the city to have a different one than the-
Procurement, procurement was another.
Procurement, that was the other thing looking at.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So, we'll be back to see those.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Counselor Graney?
Quick, just, for, for merely just, we're obligated under McKinny Vinto with the, the school transportation, probably if we could just figure out what exactly our obligations are under that law. Secondly, Shrek the Musical is coming up at Holyoke High School, and I hope we're going to see you there, Doctor.
I will be there. I just bought my tickets.
It's going to be a treat, okay? It always is. And thirdly, if, if we could, I know our graduation rate has increased, that's a good thing.
Yes.
But could you break it down, Holyoke High School Dean, for us?
Yeah, we have, I think, is that in the packet there that people have? Yes, you, that's a good question.
Okay, as long as-
Yep.
Thank you, we got that.
I think on your second page there, Mr. Graney, you can see the, the breakdown by each of the schools. Holy, all of Holyoke schools, Dean, and then Holyoke High.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan?
I had three quick things here. The, the dropout rate. What, what was the dropout rate for the state, though?
I don't know the state numbers, but it's, I don't know offhand what the state number was. Apologize.
I don't know what we're being measured against here, just that it went down.
Well, it actually went up, which, it went up, which means that it's going in the wrong direction.
No, I understand that, but I don't know what we're, what we're being measured against. What is the dropout rate in other communities?
Most communities, I think, are in the, you know, two to three percent range of dropouts. I, I just don't know the number. We're a little higher than the state average in dropout rate.
The, the reason I'm drilling in on this is it's one of the questions I brought up during the public discussions with the, the state board that they, they sent here.
Okay, yeah.
And that was never, they, they never gave an adequate answer on that. The, the, the problem, and I'll, I'll give you an example. One of the guys that worked for us, his brother is now enrolled twice in the public schools and twice moved back to Puerto Rico.
Yep.
So, now, does he count as having dropped out twice out of the system or is there a way of accounting for this kind of stuff?
No, they do account. We do do corrections to make sure that if, in fact, this, this student has left and gone to another district or another school, that that would, in fact, count as a dropout for us. I can get you more information on that because I'm not giving, I'm not going to give you an adequate answer either, so we can make sure we can get you that information.
Yeah, it's just because the amount of that that goes on in Holyoke is so much more than what goes on in Long Meadow or South Hadley or, you know.
Right, and we have to reconcile that, and that's on us to make sure we be, we, we report it to the state, so we've got to make sure we do our due diligence to make sure we're not double counting children, for example.
Okay. The second thing was going back to the, the connection with Goodwin College.
Sure.
It, it was your chief of staff, Stephanie-
Stephanie, yep.
And also Bob Archambeau from Dean Tech.
Dean, yep.
They, they've met the people from Goodwin College and also the people from Windsor Marketing Group. The Windsor Marketing Group, the Armada family have deep roots back to Holyoke. They started with a small store right on Sergeant Street in the Churchill section, and they now have a small chain of stores in East Long Meadow, and they've grown Windsor Marketing into a nationally recognized advertising marketing through, through the food industry, and they're really reaching, the, the Armada family's really reaching back out to Holyoke. Kevin Armada, besides what he's trying to do with a pipeline through the graphic arts school, is, he's also on the Board of Directors for Goodwin College and Bentley College, and they're willing to do all kinds of stuff, send buses up here to Holyoke to bring students and faculty administrators down a tour of the Goodwin campus, meet with the people, the whole nine yards, so, you know.
Well, we'd be foolish not to follow up, yeah. We, we need to do that.
Right. And then, finally, I really wanted to congratulate, I wasn't aware, on bringing in Anthony Soto. That's a real tribute to what Dean Tech used to be and could be again, and I've known the Soto family for twenty-plus years. I know their dad, I know their brother Armando, and Anthony's top shelf. That's a great, great pickup for Holyoke.
Yeah, we worked hard to bring Anthony here. I'm really looking forward to him being here, yeah.
Good there, yeah.
School committee member, Krishan.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, to say, Dr. Zright, I have really enjoyed the first couple of months being on the school committee, and the responsiveness, sometimes within an hour, getting an email back from Dr. Zright, and also situations with the principal, I have two children at the high school, what's happening there, and the redesign, just getting the responsiveness from Mr. Sullivan. Indeed, he is working very hard. The breadth of this turnaround plan is incredible. We've only touched on a few points here tonight, very important points, but I'm very impressed with the quality and the amount of work that's been able to have been completed with the, the group that we met in school committee of the central office review and some of the suggestions that came up that seemed, you know, it was very eye-opening to see the, the, the amount of funds that we can be saving, and also the, the quality of the people on the committee. There was, you know, a lot of murmuring among parents, why aren't there any parents on this secondary school redesign committee? And I was so impressed with the principal of Westfield Vocational, the suggestions that came from him, knowing that his school was going to a Level Four, within a few years brought it to a Level One school in the state. The suggestions that he had, they resonated with me, and the idea that we could once again have a waiting list to get into Dean, Dean was, was something that really caught my attention. And these are all, there was another, another thing I should mention, I've been involved with the organization of PTOs in the, the entire school district that Dr. Zright has been meeting with, parents, and getting engaged with parents who are leaders at their schools, and he's undertaken an effort to form a nonprofit corporation where all these PTOs that are, you know, either non-existent or in various stages of flux, will start to come together to reengage and get families involved in the schools. And these are all really impressive. I really thank you for all your efforts and everything that you've done so far.
Thank you.
One of the things in the, the secondary redesign that is in, but I, I find to be an important piece of it, is the alternate school. And I know we've talked about it a lot, and I'm just wondering if, if there is, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I, I think it's a very important piece of it. I'm wondering what, what kind of a timeline are we looking at because September just seems like right around the corner as we sit here in February. I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, like, like anything, we're, there's a lot to do in a short amount of time, but we, our plan is to open a program or a school by fall of two, you know, this fall. We have looked at space, the, the previous administration had looked into it already, so we have some plans already. Gina Roy from my team had been involved in that. In our budget meetings today, we, we have set that aside as an investment we need to make. And, so, I don't have all the details, but we are looking at a nine-to-twelve alternative school for overage, undercredited students. Chicopee has a model that we've looked at, Fitchburg has an excellent model that we've looked at as well, that involves, you know, that, that would allow students also some flexibility on when they could come to schools. It could be nighttime, so they can work during the day, and we want to make sure it works for, you know, for, for students where school isn't working for them right now. They may have other responsibilities, caring for, for children, caring for family. We want them to be, you know, flexible in creating a program that works. So, but I think the details will be coming out in the next few months, but it is definitely our intention, I, I said even before the, the recommendations came out, that that was a priority for Holyoke, is to open an alternative school this fall. Thank you.
Any other counselors or committee members? No? Oh, Counselor-
I, I know that he brought, you brought the attention in regards to the alternative school, and I know you already, and you've been very in front of this pathways where the students are already going to Dean, and I have several youth that have returned back to school, so I'm very happy that it's actually a model that is working.
Pathways model, yeah.
The pathways model, so I just want the public to know, in case there's any youth out there, that it's available and it's really working out. Thank you.
Yeah, Gina Roy and her team, we have Freddie Anduhar. Holyoke High's done a nice job running that program, and we have about, I think, sixty students, fifty to sixty students invol- well, enrolled in this alternative pathway right now, but we needed to be a little more robust than that. Want to continue that, but also to open a school that would serve, better serve our students, so.
Just, I want to thank you again for coming down tonight.
Sure.
And we appreciate both of you coming tonight, your first experience with the city council, too, so, they, they invite. But no, it was great that you came, and just, I would encourage anybody listening at home and to feel free to, if they have issues, you know, contact the principal, contact Dr. Zright, contact your school committee members, contact the, their city, their city councils, whoever they feel comfortable with, making sure, because your answers will get responded to, through Dr. Zright or, you know, somebody in his staff. So, I think that's one thing that has got to change and has changed since he's taken over a lot more responsive, and that's, that's what I've been hearing. And we just got to, like you said, engage people and families so they're not afraid to come and, and, and ask, and that there isn't, there shouldn't be any retribution for them to ask a question. If they feel, they don't feel comfortable contacting me or, or, you know, their ward counselor, contact their, their city counselor, contact somebody that, that can assist us. I just want to thank you again for coming down this evening and look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you.
And I'll allow you closing statements, and then I'll wrap up the meeting, so.
No, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate this. I mean, this, this receivership is not about one person doing something to a community, it's about a community working together, and I, I continue for however long I'm here, that's how we're going to, I, I hope to continue to work, and it does require the folks in this room, elected officials, to work closely with us to, to improve what we, what we do in our school, so I appreciate that. I would like the opportunity to come back to this council around some specific things that relate to, I think, some city-school relationships around some facilities questions I have, and then some processes between the, the district, I mean, the schools and the city. So, if we could do that, I mean, we have a couple of specific agenda items that I'd love to bring to the committee.
And just to answer that from our end, let me know, we could file those orders tomorrow. We can have those before the full council to vote them back to the committee.
I'll make sure I connect with John, is our, is he the-
The joint chair, so it's both of us, but on the city council side, we file them so the council knows what we're talking about around the specific issues, so when we kick them back, we, it's, it's a, it's a process. We'll get, take care of that. From my end, on, you know, co-chairing this with John Brunel, like I said, he's been great in helping me with that. This is a learning process. I think my predecessor, actually, City Council One, Ward One, Gladys LeBron Martinez was the chair from the city council before, so I'd have to be remiss if I didn't thank her. Likewise, the fellow committee chairs, Council President Jourdain, my colleagues for coming and spending these two hours in chambers, but most importantly, the public, you all here in the chambers who have sat through these two hours, you at home, I thank you. As the chair, I can tell you this renewed sense of spirit of public interest and me just getting emails and phone calls and text messages, all of those questions that you have forwarded me, I have forwarded those to Dr. Zright. We will get specific answers and, and get those back as a public steward. I am so thrilled that you're here, Dr. Zright. We look to build this relationship.